Okay.
I knew we should have done this earlier.
But I just want to ask Carrie one question before we get going. Carrie? Can you unmute?
Yes, I'm unmuted and we're recording and we're on Facebook Live.
Right, so what I, but on my screen, when I went down and looked, I did not see the way, I did not see how to, oh, there's more. Is it under more to go to the Facebook?
I already did it. We're already, we're already there.
Okay.
But if you want to be the host, I can share, you know, I think you can share.
Never mind. So this is one of the things where you say, Tim, we pay you to read the Bible and start doing that.
We would not say that.
Okay. All right. So what I want to talk to you about tonight is just what happened during Holy Week. You know, a lot of times we have this opportunity to kind of sit back and, but because once we get into it, we've got all Monday, Thursday, we've got Good Friday. And one of the things we have to figure out is paying, you know, what exactly happened during that week? So there's some stuff that's legendary, but there's also an interesting thing because what we could do is take a look at all of the gospel accounts because all, each, each and every gospel accounts for at least some aspects of Holy Week. And we can lay those down together, right? And when we do that, we call it, we're looking at the harmony. And so we can see what's common and what's not common between them. So I'm going to share my screen and I'm going to show you a harmony of the Holy Week events across the four gospels. And then we're going to spend a little bit of time, just we're going to read through some of them. Hey, Meg?
Yes.
I'm going to mute you if you don't mind.
Okay.
That was, I heard the dog whining a little bit in there. So. Anyway, so here we go. I'm going to go over here and I need to. Okay. So in front of you, you can see the harmony of the events of Holy Week. Did everybody see that?
Yep.
Yes.
So we know, right, that that Jesus arrives and he, he, he comes, he doesn't come right into Jerusalem. So if we were looking at a map of Jerusalem on the east, on the, Jerusalem sits there on the, on the east side of Jerusalem. There is a, there's a valley that runs down. It's called, it's a wad, which it means it, when it rains, there'll actually be a river in it, but most times it's dry. And then on the other side of this is, is the Mount of Olives. And on the mount, on the other side of the Mount of Olives is this village called Bethany. So you can actually stand on the Mount of Olives and see everything in Jerusalem, but it would take you probably a couple hours to walk it. You're going to do that. On that hillside with the Garden of Gethsemane at the top, right? Is the, and then Bethany on the other side, that whole entire hillside is a Jewish graveyard. And it's there and the, the people have been buried there because they say that when, when the resurrection occurs, right? That's where it's going to happen. So everybody, so they've actually run out of room on that, on that. Interesting thing is, is that we know when we read the Old Testament, or I shouldn't say the most interesting thing, here's an interesting aside. When we read the Old Testament, we know that, that whenever anything of any significance happened any place, that the Hebrew people would pile rocks, like when they crossed the Jordan, right? They made the temple at Shiloh by piling rocks up. And so if you, if you happen to be walking through that cemetery, you'll notice that there are stones on virtually every grave. And that's when people visit, they put a stone and that stone signifies that something of importance happened. That this person was important and that's how they, that's how they do memories, which I think is really a neat, a neat thing. The, so when they came in, Jesus comes through Bethany first. There spends time with, raises Lazarus, according in the Gospel of John, but we, it also has Mary and Martha. Mary anoints Jesus by his feet, putting perfume on his feet. Crowds come to there and then on that Sunday, right? He has his triumphal entry into Jerusalem, which is our Palm Sunday. So if you look at this table, you can see that you have Matthew, Mark, Luke and John, and then you can see that some of these events occur in almost everyone and, but, but not many of them, right? John's got some unique things. Matthew, Mark and Luke have a lot of commonality, but not, not superb. I, I mean, if we go down here, I don't know if there's, it takes all the way down here. When we get into Good Friday, before we start to see some commonalities that go across all four of them. Right? And of course, then we get into the crucifixion and the resurrection and there's a lot. So there's a lot, there's a lot that we don't know about the events leading up into Passover, what we call Holy Week. Passover is a lunar holiday. So it depends on when the first new moon is. And so that's Nisi, and so that becomes the first, the Rosh Hashanah, the first day of the year. And then it's a lunar cycle that follows that when it comes to Passover. So Passover doesn't, it, it, it can vary. And it's always very, very close to Easter. We know that because Easter, believe it or not, is a lunar holiday. That's we, we do it, it's the first Sunday following the full moon. So if you've been outside at night and looking around, you'll see that there's an awful lot of, there's a big, there's a big, there was a big full moon about four or five days ago and it's closing down now. So we are in, in the Passover. A lot of people said, well, the Jewish, the Jewish High Holidays were, you know, on Saturdays. It always begins Saturdays at nighttime. And that's not the case with Passover. Passover can follow, can fall on any day of the week. Although contemporary Jewish people do not, they only celebrate it on, on Mondays, Tuesdays and Fridays. If it falls, if it falls during the week, I don't know why they don't do it on the other days. But so we do know that here they come in, it's on a Sunday, right? And on that, we go back and we take a look and where that was, and we think that we figured out when that Passover was going to be. So would have been on Thursday. So in comes Jesus, he gets into this triumphal entry. And if you watched our, if you, if you, if you participated in our worship on Sunday, we read out of Mark, we read all that all the way down through his triumphal entry. And and we're going to continue on with that. We're going to read a little bit more out of Mark today. So that was on Sunday. And we left it off in Mark 11, verse 11. Right? So we can pick up here on verse 12 and continue down, all the way down into 21. So the events, when we lay them out though, we can see here in John, we're talking, we talk, we hear about how Jesus comes towards Jerusalem, how he arrives in Bethany at the home of Mary and Martha and Lazarus, how he stays there. Then his triumphal entry into Jerusalem, which is the Palm Sunday, we know that he told his disciples, go and find, find a donkey cult that's tied, you're going to find it here and then one said that we need to take it. So and then he enters in, it's caused a lot of problems, right? It caused a lot of problems. Jewish people are flocking to him and the Pharisees and the Sadducees are the people that are, of, people are of influence in the temple and they're trying to find ways that they can stop him. On the other side of the city, there was five major gates into Jerusalem at the time. On the other side of the city, through the main gate, Rome sent additional soldiers. There were soldiers that were stationed there all the time, but they sent in additional soldiers to, to buoy up how many, how many they would have there because they wanted a strong presence because they wanted no problems. And Pilate would have talked to both Cephas at the temple and also Herod, that they say, remember, we want no problems. We want no problems here. So you can see that there was, there, there was a tension that was, that was coming, coming to be. So we're, we're told in Luke, in Luke that Jesus weeps over Jerusalem. At that point, he's on, he's at, he's on the top of the Mount of Olives and looks back. And he weeps, he says, Jerusalem, my Jerusalem. And because he's seen the, that he knows that he's going to be, he's going to be, this is his death. He knows that he's going to his death. All right. So I'm going to go back over here and so we can see that we have, he goes into the temple, kind of gets the lay of the land and then leaves. He goes back to Bethany where they, where they were staying. And then we're going to pick it up on the Monday, right? Of of Holy Week. We can see here that he curses the fig tree, does that in Matthew and Mark. He clears the temple and he does that both in all three of the synoptic gospels. And then he goes back, we're told, Mark tells us that, oh yeah, by the way, he does that. And then he goes back on to Bethany again. So he's got two hours to walk back out of the city. And then we're going to continue on into Tuesday. There's not a lot that happens on that Tuesday, right? But he does come back in on Wednesday and causes some problems. So I'm going to go over to Mark and we're going to go to, start with Mark 11, 12, if that's okay with everybody. Any questions? Okay. There's accordance. All right, I'm going to increase our font size a little bit here.
Yes, Tim?
Yes, I'm here.
I'm late. I was late on trying to raise my hand and finding the right thing.
Okay.
Two questions. One is, is there any way we could get a copy of what you shared with the Holy Week?
Yeah, that PDF file. Yeah.
And then I kind of was like reading why he cursed the fig tree because I didn't remember that. And I kind of was reading ahead a little bit. So did you say we're going to get into that right now, right?
Into what?
Into why he cursed the fig tree?
Yes. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So here we go. We're going to read some of the Word of the Lord. We're going to start now. We've got Jesus has gone back to Bethany. And that was on Monday. And so here is Tuesday, Mark, Mark handily tells us the following day. So we know it's Tuesday. "On the following day, when they came from Bethany, he was hungry." This was Jesus. "Seeing in the distance a fig tree and leaf, he went to see whether perhaps he could find anything on it." "When he came to it, he found nothing but leaves, for it was not the season for figs." "He said to it, 'May no one ever eat fruit from you again.'" "And his disciples heard it." I'm going to continue on because the fig tree comes up again here towards the end. "Then they came to Jerusalem, and he entered the temple and began to drive out those who were selling and those who were buying in the temple. And he overturned the tables of the money changers, the seats of those who sold dogs. And he would not allow anyone to carry anything through, through the temple." He was teaching and saying, it is not, it is not written, "My house," is it not written, "my house shall be called a house of prayer for all of the nations, but you have made it a den of robbers." "And when the chief priests and the scribes heard it, they kept looking for a way to kill him, for they were afraid of him, because the whole crowd was spellbound by his teaching." Okay. So we're going to stop there. I preached about this, but we'll just touch on it again. The fig tree is this anomaly that we kind of, it's kind of neat. We're going to talk about that one. But here we, you know, we have the driving out of the money changers in the temple. It's interesting to read that and, and if anybody wants that, that harmonization, that table, it's a PDF. And so we, we can send that out. So maybe just, just send me a note that you would like it. I'll make sure that I get it to you. The, the, but what the interesting thing is, is that each one gives us slightly different details. Mark is really cool here because he says, you know, it wasn't, some of them would make it seem that it was the money changers that he was after. Mark says, hey, it was everybody. It was everybody that was complicit in it. And you might say, why? Well, the reason why is because people were making money on this thing. And people had been led to believe that they had to spend money in order that, in order to make themselves pure. And, and that, that was the only way that God was going to bless them. So you know, and here, and so Jesus said, look, you know, this is a den of robbers. And then he says, my house, he pulls on scripture, "my house shall be called a house of prayer for all the nations." So it's saying, it's not just, it's bad enough that we've taken our own people and corrupted them. But we're supposed to be the shining light for all the nations. And in, in Hebrew, that would be the Gentiles, right? It would be, it doesn't mean a non Hebrew person, just means that of the other, the other nations. So, and of course, what we've got is the people that were in charge that probably should have pricked their ears up and said, hey, maybe he's got a point here. Instead, they just say, look, we just have to find a way because he, this, he's really causing us problems here. Why? Because there, it's, it's a push against their power, right? And they don't want to lose their power. And the other thing is that the other thing is, is we got to remember Rome is right there and Pilate is saying, don't you let your people get out of line. Your people get out of line, we're going to have a problem. So. "And when evening came, Jesus' disciples went out of the city." Here we go. We're back to the fig tree again. So in the morning, so this would have been when? This would have been on Wednesday, I guess, right? Today. "In the morning, as they passed by, they saw the fig tree withered away to its roots. Then Peter remembered and said to him, Rabbi, look, the fig tree that you cursed has withered. And Jesus answered them, 'Have faith in God. Truly, I tell you, if you say to this mountain, be taken up and thrown into the sea, and if you do not doubt in your heart, but believe that what you say will come to pass, it will be done to you.' So I tell you, whatever you ask for in prayer, believe that you have received it and it will be yours." Okay. So we're going to stop there. So does that help us a little bit understand what was going on with the fig tree?
Yeah.
So the fig tree is standing in for Jerusalem, right? It's alive. I mean, it's got leaves. It's, so it's not dead, but it doesn't have any fruit. And if we remember Jesus' other teachings, it's the, it's, and what John the Baptist says, you know, bear fruit worthy of repentance. So in, and truly, if we're doing the right things, it's going to bear fruit. So you can be alive, but you might not have the Holy Spirit that is enlivening your life and making it worthwhile and, and, and walking in the ways that God wants us to walk. So he curses it. And then, and then when they come by it, the next time they see it, it's, it's withered, it's dead. And, and we know that that's the other thing is because with John the Baptist, he said, you know, anything that isn't good is going to be cut and burned in the fire. Go ahead, Cheryl. I'm sorry.
I know, that's okay. I didn't mean to interrupt you. So, but if it wasn't the season for fruit and the tree wasn't supposed to produce, I, I'm having trouble getting the, I understand what he's saying. You have to even. Yeah.
Well, the other thing is, is that he talks about prayer here, right? So because he uses it, he uses, I mean, it's an analogy for Jerusalem or stand and metaphor for Jerusalem, but, but also here, he also talks about this. And Peter says, hey, look, you cursed it and look what happened. And Jesus uses this as a teaching moment. Says, hey, have faith in God, right? Because if you, if you truly believe in something, right? And, and then ask for it to be done, it gets done, right? Amazing things. So he's saying that that's what he did. So the fruitfulness, right? You have your own mind. So you got to think about this yourself and come to your own things. In my mind, what it's telling me is that Jesus wants us to be fruitful at all times, not just in season.
Okay.
So. Okay.
So not just the Christmas and Easter.
And if you ask for it, if you ask for it, right, it will be granted. Okay. I mean, he uses this thing about a mountain, take it up and throw it into the sea. All right. I'm going to need to check on something here. So we're down to 11:21. What are you looking at right now? Are you guys still over on the the Bible verse?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. I get a little confused sometimes. So we're just going to continue on here in just a second. So this is the next thing he says after talking about trades. He says, when you're praying, right? Whenever, whenever you are praying, forgive, right? For if you have anything against anyone, so that your Father in heaven may also forgive you your trespasses. I mean, Jesus tells us a lot about praying. He also, in Matthew, he tells us how to pray in chapters five and six, the Sermon on the Mount. When you pray, and he says, look, you know, don't go out and beat your chest and, and pray, go, go into private. Mary, your father will hear you. And then he says, and pray like this. He gives us the, the Lord's prayer. But here, Mark throws this thing right in there. It says, you know, when you pray, forgive. So think about that. I mean, I know I don't do this and I should probably should, but how many times do I begin each of my prayers, whether they be in public, you know, with you guys, or whether they be my own prayers, and I just say, Father, let me forgive anybody that I have anything against here because I know that that's going to be, that's going to be that. That's tough. That's tough. Anyway. Wanted to throw that in there. All right. I'm going to stop to share at this point.
Do you have a question?
Yes, Beth.
Okay. I'm a little confused here with what all that is. And it kind of goes back to what Cheryl was saying. The tree wasn't in season. He knew, you know, and he said, but it was like all the examples he gave about killing the fig tree, moving on a mountain and whatnot, is kind of like against someone, but then now he's saying to begin by forgive, you know, asking forgiveness.
Right. So you think that those are in opposition to one another?
Well, kind of in a way because, all right, the fig tree didn't do anything. It wasn't in season. And he just, you know, wilted it. And then he said, you know, if you pray, we can move a mountain and throw it in the ocean, which is sort of a negative thing if there were people on the mountain and stuff. But then it's like, okay, but now start off by asking for forgiveness for your, you know.
Yeah. Look, I don't write this stuff.
I know.
But you know, the interesting, the thing that when we read scripture, right, we really, we need to really read, read it critically. And to read critically doesn't mean that you're, that you're, you're reading it, trying to disprove it. When we read critically, we're asking questions, right? So it's like, there's always this question, these questions that we should be asking like, why? You know, who's he talking to? Who's talking? And why? Because number one, it's all God's word. But the Holy Spirit moved each one of these gospel writers to put it down in a specific way to serve a purpose, right? So I always think that, so for some reason with Mark, right, when he was telling this part of the Jesus story, that was really important to him, that important enough that he, that he, that he wrote it, that Jesus said it at that point. So, and I think that scripture could, you know, sometimes when we read it, it's just, it's like a jewel. We pick it up. And whenever we look at it and we turn it, right, the facets we see, we see, can see another way that the light is refracted. And it's, they're all beautiful, but so sometimes things are over the top of our head and it's just, and Jesus tells us that sometimes it's occluded to us because it's not meant for us at that point. But then other times when we read it, we're going to see, we're going to see it and hear it in a way that we never did before. And it'll be very, very meaningful. So I guess what I'm telling you, Beth, is keep reading it because maybe it'll be meaningful for you at some point. But I think that the power of prayer, right? When we look at the whole, the parrot, when we look at verses together, it's called a paracope, right? So we look at all those verses together and we say, okay, so we've got this fig tree that Jesus curses and withers. Then, you know, and then we, we hear about the cleansing of the temple, right? And then the next day they go past and they see the withered fig tree. So there's a comment, there's a, that means that there's a thread through there that we got to find. So when we look at it, we find it, it directly leads down into the power of prayer that Jesus is saying. So it's got to be, the linkages have to be there for that, for the reason why Mark put that in there. Now, whether we have it exactly right or not, I don't know, but I think that, I think that when we look at it and we say, the, the tree was not in season, so it wasn't bearing fruit. That could just be an excuse, right? Well, nobody expected that. Well, Jesus is saying, hey, I expect you, I expect you to be fruitful at all times because I'm giving you that capacity. So don't, don't limit yourself. And, and then we also need to then reach back into what, as I said before, what John the Baptist told us, which was, look, you know, if you're not fruitful, those trees are, that aren't fruitful are cut down. Jesus also talks about the vine, right? The vines that don't produce grapes are pruned off. So, and then it also says that those things are burned. So they're useless. So I think that prayer is just the, it's the vehicle that carries us to that. And that's why that's in there.
Okay. Sherri's got something to say too.
All right. I was just thinking that he had just come from the temple and he was angry and he was mad and they had said that he was hungry. And I guess my take on it was that he was just angry and he cursed out this, this tree because he walked up to it and it didn't have anything for him. And then, you know, a couple of days later, they saw what it had done when he had spoke out, you know, cursing this tree. So he said, you have to remember to pray for people that you have to forgive. So maybe that was like a reminder, like he has to forgive those people in the temple because look what happens when you don't and your anger gets the best of you. And you know, you.
There you go.
So.
Now you're using your noggin. I like that one. That'll preach. So, so it's, he says, at, almost as a caution, right?
Right.
Prayer is really, really powerful. And if, and, and we need to prepare ourselves. So when we pray, we need to forgive people. So we don't, we don't misuse it, right? That we center ourselves in our thing. I like that. I like that better than my answer.
Go Cheryl Lynn.
See, that's the benefit of us together. All right. So I'm going to share my, oh, there's chat. There's something in chat.
It's just your email when you send it like.
Very good. Thank you. And I need to share my screen again.
Going to do a shout out to Barb Shoot and Ann Winslow who are watching on Facebook Live.
All right. Welcome. All right. So we're down here now. We're not going to have time to get through all of this, but we don't need to, right? Because we've got Monday, Thursday, and we've got Good Friday covered. So we're really, we're really worrying about what, what happened here in this time, this Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday timeframe. What, what happened here in this time, this Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday timeframe. And um, let's go back over here. So we've got, we're gonna pick it up with eleven twenty-seven and go through twelve forty-four. So this is. This helps us a little bit, tell us a little bit more about that, uh, what was going on. Uh, in the temple, and I want you to notice, if you can see where I pointer is, temple is the, this person titled a temple controversies in Jerusalem. And we can see that there's quite a bit, and it's both in Matthew, Mark, and Luke. John doesn't give any attention to it at all. And um, but we're gonna, we're gonna continue on with Mark here, just because we, well. You know what, we're gonna go over here. We're gonna go to Luke, Luke twenty. Luke twenty.
I'm waiting, I got pictures on my page.
You got what?
I got pictures on that page.
Okay. So Luke twenty, so this is, this is happening um. You know, this is like Wednesday today, the Holy Week. So we know that he's going back and forth. I think I said during Sunday, you know, we think that there was probably um. There was tens of thousands, if not a hundred thousand more people that piled in Jerusalem. In the, in the, in the week preceding and up to Passover. Every observant Jew, um, which was everybody at the time, um, would, uh, that could. Would go to Jerusalem for Passover and um. That was probably the, the only time, you know, that they would have to go there, that they would, that they would. They would stop doing what they did and what they normally did. Not everybody went, because somebody had to stay and watch over livestock and do things like that, so. But many, many people did come. So much so that there was not enough, nearly enough room within the city walls for everybody. And so, uh, when Jesus was staying in Beth- Bethany. That was, that was very, very typical, and you would see, there would be tents that would appear everywhere. Um, and uh, people would uh, their relatives would stay with them, so uh. And if you've ever been, I, I have not been to the Holy Land, I wanna go, um, but my understanding is that the roofs. Of um, of the old, of the old homes, the period homes, um, they were actually living spaces. So people would actually, um, it's a very dry environment, so um. People would actually lay out, there, there might be fifty people uh, on a rooftop sleeping, you know, during this, during this time. And the temple is the central point, and so Jesus here, we're gonna hear that he was teaching in the temple, which so shows that he had a position of authority. I mean, he was a, he was a rabbi, he was a teacher, so uh, he had the right to preach in the temple. And that this is the main temple in Jerusalem, so um, uh. You know, he was, he somehow, somehow he had that authority. So here we go, we're in, we're in Luke now. One day, as he was teaching the people in the temple and telling the good news. Now, let's stop there. The good news, that's the, in, that's. That's his, right? We say it's the good news of Jesus Christ, so this is, that means that he's not. Teaching old style rabbi stuff, he's teaching in this new stuff, that's getting, that's getting them into problems. So he's telling the good news, the chief priests and the scribes came with the elders and said to him. Tell us, by what authority are you doing these things? Who is it? Who gave you the authority? And he answered them, I will ask you a question, and you tell me. Did the baptism of John uh, come from heaven, or was it of human origin? They discussed it with one another, saying, if we say from heaven, he will say, why did you not believe him? But if we say of human origin, all the people will stone us, for they are convinced that John was a prophet. So they answered that they did not know where it came from. Jesus said to them, neither will I tell you by what authority I am doing these things. So um, this is not uh, an uncommon thing for Jesus to answer a question with a question. And he turns it back around on it. The uh, the scribes, um, the law keepers within the temple, they're saying, they're trying, what they're trying to do is to get Jesus to have uh. To uh, say blasphemy, you know, that he was, that he was God, because the only person, right, who could uh. Who could forgive sin was God himself. So uh, he didn't go all that way to it at this point, does a little bit later on. So that's the first controversy in the temple. Here's the second one. He began to tell the people this parable. A man planted a vineyard, leased it tenants and went to another country for a long time. When the season came, he was sent a slave to the tenants in order that they might give him his share of the produce of the vineyard. But the pen, tenants beat him and sent him away empty handed. Next, he sent another slave, that one they also beat and insulted and sent away empty handed. And he sent still a third. This one, also, they wounded and threw out. And the owner of the vineyard said, what shall I do? I will send my beloved son, perhaps they just, uh, they will respect him. But when the tenants saw him, they disgusted among themselves and said, this is the heir. Let us kill him, so that the inheritance may be ours. So they threw him out of the vineyard and killed him. What then? Will the owner of the vineyard do to them? He will come and destroy those tenants and give the vineyard to others. When they heard this, they said, heaven forbid, but he looked at them and said. When then does this tech, when, what then does this text mean? The stone the builders rejected has become the cornerstone. I'm gonna stop right there. So here's the beauty of reading through this together, is because we can see the context that these things, this, this particular parable, we've all read. Uh, as, you know, if we do daily devotions, it might appear as a daily devotion, or if we have, you know, some sort of a. A devotional book that we look at occasionally, we'll see that this is, and then somebody gives a little bit of a discourse of it, but now we can see this thing is saying, hey, this is. What it happens. So he tells this to the people he's teaching, and the chief priests and the scribes come and they ask him, by what authority are you doing these things? And he said, well. You know, he turns it around on them, and, and he said, well, we gotta be very careful with what we say, because if. If we say the one way, then we're, we're saying it's blasphemy, but if we say that it isn't, then all these people are gonna rise up against us, so they, they choose to say nothing. And then this is the parable that he teaches. So those, those. The chief priests and the scribes are probably still there, but now touches this one. This is great, this is the vineyard, the vineyard is the temple itself, right? He's got this, so, and he says, hey, God sends. God sends his slave. He sends prophets, right? And the people, the tenants, they don't own the vineyard, right? They, they beat him. And kill him. Send him away. And so he says, finally, he says, now look, after they do this numerous times, I'm gonna send my son, and they do the same thing. So this is also a prophecy of what's gonna be happening here in just a day or two. Kinda, you know, pretty neat. If you, uh, if you ever saw Jesus Christ Superstar, this is actually one of the, one of the scenes that they do in Jesus Christ Superstar. So you can Google that, see that. Alright, so he, he pulls out of Isaiah, uh, this uh, the stone that the builders rejected has become the cornerstone. Everyone who fa- falls on that stone will be broken to pieces, and it will crush anyone on whom it falls. When the scribes and the chief priests realized that he had told this parable against them, they wanted to lay hands on him at that very hour. But they feared the people. So they watched him. And they sent spies who pretended to be honest in order to trap him by what he said. So as to hand him over to the jurisdiction, the authority of the governor. So let's stop right there. So the way that Rome did is they appointed a governor, and the governor was pilot, Pontius Pilate. And he was responsible for making sure that the taxes were paid that were due Rome, and that the Roman tax, the Roman peace was theirs, that nobody stepped out of line. So um, and, and they realize that the chief priests. And uh, the scribes realized that this is something that they gotta get rid of for their own good. Uh, but they're gonna, they're gonna use this and turn it around, and they're gonna try to get Rome to do it, because. He's got all these people, all these Jewish people that are following Jesus right now. So he said, well, we gotta see if we can't turn this around. So here it is, so now they gotta catch him on something that's not. Not temple related, right? Because the Roman governor's not gonna care much about that. So they go into this, this, so they asked him, teacher, we know that you are right in what you say and teach, and you show deference to no one. But teach the way of God in accordance with truth. Is it lawful for us to pay taxes to the emperor or not? You see where they're going with this? Right? If he says, don't pay taxes, now all of a sudden the Roman governor, it's got, it's got something to move on. So they can run to him and say, this guy says, don't pay taxes. Is it lawful to pay taxes to the emperor or not? But he perceived their craftness and said to them. Show me a denarius. So denarius was uh, equivalent of like a fifty cent piece. And uh, it was Roman currency. I had one somewhere. That wasn't from the time of Christ, but it was like, probably would, it was probably like two hundred AD, and they always had the emperor's face on it. I can't find it, um, but uh, but I had one, I lost it in the move, I think. Um, it's either that or I used it to buy a can of Diet Coke. Um, show me a denarius. Whose head and whose title does it bear? And they said, the emperors. And he said to them, then give to the emperor the things that are the emperors, and to God, the things that are God's. And they were not able in the presence of the people to trap him by what he said, and being amazed by his answer, they became silent. So again, Jesus, you know, another answers that question with a question, turns it right back around him, he says, look, you know. It's got the emperor's face on it, give that to the emperor, right? And if it's God's, give back to God. So he got out of that one. But now we have another group coming. Here comes the Sadducees. And the Sadducees were kind of a, an elite, um, they were not, um. They weren't, they weren't the royal family, but they were, um, like the people who had attended the royal family. And um. They had a, they did not believe in the resurrection. Um, so here they come, this is another sect of, of, of the Hebrew people. It says, some Sadducees, those who say there is no resurrection, came to him. Jesus and asked him a question. Teacher? Moses wrote for us that if a man's brother dies, leaving a wife but no children, the man shall marry the widow and raise up children for his brother. Now, there were seven brothers. The first one married and died childless, then the second, and the third married her, and so on, in the same way, all. Seven died childless. Finally, the woman who also died. In the resurrection, therefore, whose like, whose wife will the woman be? For the seven. Had married her. Jesus said to them, those who belong to this age marry and are given in marriage. But those who are considered worthy of a place in that age and in the resurrection from the dead, neither marry nor are given in marriage. Indeed, they cannot die anymore, because they are like angels and are children of God, being children of the resurrection. And the fact that the dead are raised, Moses himself showed, uh, in God of, oh, sorry. And the fact that the dead are raised, Moses himself showed in the story about the bush, where he speaks of the Lord as the God of Abraham, the God of Isaac, and the God of Jacob. Now, he is God, not of the dead, but of the living, for to him, all of them are alive. And some of the scribes answered, teacher, you have spoken well. For they no longer dared to ask him another question. So this is one that a lot of people have questions about sometimes, they're like, what does this mean? And the, the, the kind of the dangerous part is that, you know. I think every single one of us has a construct in our mind of what we think heaven's gonna be like. And we imagine that, um, you know, if we've lost a spouse, that when we get there, you know, we're gonna be reunited with that spouse. And it's just gonna be a continuation of what we had, and maybe it will be, I don't know. But, but Jesus is here saying, hey, look, you know, this kingdom of heaven that I'm talking about. It's much different. The relationship, some of the relationships and. And the way that we relate are necessary here on this earth because of the separation that we have from God, the fact that. Um, you know, that, that, that people die. So that procreative aspect of marriage was so necessary, because that's what we need to get there. But this spiritual relationship that we have with each other and with God is really transcends, transcends that, so. It's not that, that our marriages won't be valid and we won't be all together, but let's not worry about that, because it's gonna be the kingdom, it's gonna be so glorious. That it's not gonna matter. So we need to be careful. This one, this one causes me some. Tension when I think about it, right? Because I think that it's in ways, it's wonderful, no other ways, I'm like, oh, I didn't, I didn't think heaven was gonna be like that. But you know, I came after a lot of years, I thought, thinking about it, praying about it, I'm like, you know, whatever, whatever God has in mind for us in heaven, I know it's gonna be much better than anything I could ever imagine. So I'm not gonna worry about that. Questions? I can't see everybody, so need somebody to tell me if there's a question.
Anybody have a question?
Alright, we're getting through here. So this is chock full, just like in Matthew five and six, Matthew just throws this intense amount of teaching. Um, at people, this is, this is an intense amount of teaching that Jesus is doing in the temple, and it's happening in Luke, so. So then he's still in front of all these people. And then he says to them, how can they say? That the Messiah is David's son? For David himself says in the book of Psalms, I'm gonna stop this right here. So we know that it says that the Messiah is out of, is, 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 is son of, son of David, so. Jesus is saying, look, we're gonna, you're wondering about whether I'm a, I'm a prophet, or whether I'm a human, or the Messiah. Um, and you know that one of the, one of the requirements of the Messiah is that they have to be a David, David's son, so he's gonna go into this. Gonna show this. David himself says in the book of Psalms, the Lord said to my lord, sit at my right hand, until I make enemies your footstool. David thus calls him lord. So how can he be his son? Get that, the Lord said to my, David said, the Lord said to my lord, sit at my right hand. And he says, so David calls him lord. So if he's calling him lord, how can he also be his son? That's the question that he's putting forward. Kinda like that, think about it this way. Kinda like the, you know, the, the brittle that, that they always throw is, you know, um. That's that, a, a, a man and his son are in a car, and there's a car accident, the man is killed, and the son, and they go in the ER, and the son needs surgery. And uh, he said, you know, and, and the doctor comes into the room and says, I can't operate on this person, it's my son, and everybody's like, how can that be, right? Well, they answered their, that was the doctor, the surgeon is a woman, right? That comes from a time when that would have, that would be like, oh, I didn't think about that. Jesus is saying that almost, not equivalent, but he's saying the same thing here, he's trying to get people to think about it. Saying, okay, if literally, if he says that my lord, then how can that be? How can he call somebody lord that's also his son? In the hearing of all the people, he said to the disciples, beware of the scribes, you like to walk around in long robes and love to be greeted with respect in the marketplaces. Have the best seats in the synagogues and places of honor at banquets. They devour widows' houses, and for the sake of appearance, say long prayers. They will receive the greater condemnation. So the scribes are people that, you know, they're coming in and they're, they're, they're the ones that write everything and, and, um, but they also are the law. Uh, the people that interpret the law. When they say they devour widows' houses, women at the time could not own property, so if they became a widow. The scribes were the ones that would decide who got it, and it never went to the woman. Many times it ended up in the scribes, in there. And then, of course, they say they, you know, they, and they, they pray, right? They pray so eloquently. Well, they're just saying that, because that's. They, they, they just want, uh, people to be rec- to be recognized, they want the power, they don't want the connection with God, that's not what they're desiring. What they're, what they're desiring is power. Continue on with twenty-one one, he looked up and saw rich people putting their gifts into the treasury. He also saw a poor widow put in two small copper coins. Pennies. He said, truly, I tell you, this poor widow has put in more than all of them. He said, truly, I tell you, this poor widow has put in more than all of them. For all of them contributed out of their abundance. But she, out of her poverty, has put in all she had to live on. So, um, there's another parable that Jesus teaches in the gospels about this, but. He's pointing out is the fact is, you know, those, the rich people have so much and so that they might say, hey, um, you know, we see this all the time. You know, um. With universities or with hospitals or whatever it is, is, you know, somebody gives a lead gift for something, they need two million dollars, so somebody says, well, I'm giving a million dollars. And they get it named after them, right? And if you've ever, having been part of some of these capital campaigns for things like that. I know that quite oftentimes, the question that's asked is, how much do I have to give? To have my name put on it? So at that point, it's like, you're not giving because the community has a need and that this is a wonderful thing and that God's blessing, you're, you're doing it because you wanna put your name on it, right? And um, so this is the same thing, when people have a lot of money, sometimes. Their reason for giving isn't purist, right? They're doing it because, sometimes it is, it's not to say that is, but, but here's a widow that doesn't have anything. And so she looked at it and she says, you know, out of it, oh, how little I have, I can, I can, I can give these two, these two small coins. And if you wanna look at it as a percentage of, of her network, she gave an awful lot more than what they did. I think we have to be careful with that teaching though, because I think it can. It can lead some people to. To. To give more than what they, what they probably should be giving at times. All right, Luke twenty one five, when some were speaking about the temple, how it was adorned with beautiful stones and gifts dedicated to God. He said, are the, are for these things that you. Are for these things that you see. The days will come when not one stone will be left upon another, all will be thrown down. So it's a prophecy. Teacher, they asked him, when will this be and what will be the sign that this is about to take place? This is the beautiful temple. And he said, beware that you are not led astray, for many will come in my name and say, I am he, the time is near, do not go after them. When you hear of wars and insurrections, do not be terrified. For these things must take place first, but the end will not, not follow immediately. Then he said to them, nation will rise against nation and kingdom against kingdom. There will be great earthquakes and in various places famines and plagues. And there will be dreadful portents and great signs from heaven. But before. All this occurs. They will arrest you and persecute you, they will hand you over to synagogues and prisons and you will be brought before kings and governors because of my name. This will give you an opportunity to testify. So make up your minds, not to prepare your defense in advance. Where I will give you words and a wisdom that none of your opponents will be able to withstand or contradict. You will be betrayed even by parents and brothers, by relatives and friends. They will put some of you to death. You will be hated by all because of my name. But not a hair of your head will perish. By your endurance, you will gain your souls. So. I think Luke, this is, this is the big, um. This is the big pregame speech. Of Jesus, I think. In the gospel of Luke. He read, he knows what's coming and um, he's, now he's, he's saying, look, if you weren't, if you, if you didn't put. Didn't put all the things together, here's, here's something that's gonna happen. When they talk about the temple being torn down, it would fall, it would fall about forty years later. In seventy A D, um, the Rome pulled down the temple because they got tired of uh, Jewish insurrections. And uh, which was the second temple, the first temple was destroyed in five eighty six. And the second one, which wasn't nearly as luxurious, was put up. In about five, uh, five thirty, so it had been there for over five hundred years. So he says that this is gonna fall someday. And they say, well, when's that gonna happen? Because this is the house of God, this is where God lives, and he says, well, there's gonna be some things that are gonna happen, there'll be some signs, there'll be wars, there'll be things, and by the way. If you're my follower, you're gonna be persecuted because of my name. But you need to persevere through that. Because if by enduring that, you're gonna find out. Uh, about the kingdom of God. Good teachings, but really hard. Uh, I don't know if we have to do that one. This is the most ap- uh, ap- apocalyptic stuff. In the uh, in, in the gospel of Luke, but I wanna go here to twenty nine, twenty one, twenty nine, because it's. Yeah, it's eight o'clock now, but um, we talked about fig trees, so think about, you know, when, when we say that the. The gospels are strings of pearls and each one of them, you know, took those same pearls but put them together in different ways. And um, so I wanted to get to this for, for you Cheryl, right? Because in Luke, we were reading out of Mark, now this is Luke out of chapter twenty one, twenty nine, he says, then he tells him a parable. Look at the fig tree and all the trees, as soon as they sprout leaves, you can see for yourselves and know that summer is already near. So also, when you see these things taking place, you know that the kingdom of God is near. Truly, I tell you, this generation will not pass away until all these things have taken place. Heaven and earth will pass away, but my words will not pass away. So ends the reading of this one. Word of the Lord. So. Could this, could this fig tree illusion be related? And the fact that, you know, two different people heard it and they, they um. They interpreted it in different ways and then we're just seeing, you know, another way that it is just as valid, but it comes through here. And here, I think it's saying is that, look, if you take a look. At um, at this fig tree. You know that summer's coming because the leaves are starting to come out. I was out with our, uh. I was out in our garden, um, a little tiny garden, um, uh, this afternoon in Loken, and I'm seeing that there's buds on, on, on things. And it's gonna be a long time, but there's gonna be some beautiful, beautiful flowers that come out, come out of those things. And um, so he's saying, look, you know, when you know there, you're, you're knowing that summer's coming, right? That you know what, what's coming next, when you can see these portents. And so that's, I told you about these things, so maybe what, maybe um, Mark was using that fig tree. Heard the same thing, but he heard it in a different way, which was to say, hey, look, when you see something that shriveled up, you know it's dead. So, you know, uh. But then again, fig trees were very, very common apparently back then too, so. And when they say a fig. If you've ever been into the Mediterranean area, there's palm trees and. There's two types of palm trees, there's a coconut palm, which we see down in Florida and we have those things, and then there's date palms. And the date palms, um. Are the, uh, the date palms are the more prevalent ones in the Mediterranean, so that's where they get these dates from. And uh, maybe you just, you don't go anywhere in the Mediterranean where they have dates, uh, and they're really good. So when you see a fig, that's what they're talking about, the figs and the dates are the same thing. All right. I think I'm gonna stop right there.
Tim, can you, oh, you stop sharing, everyone.
Yeah, I'm here.
No, I was gonna say, yeah, so we can see each other.
Yeah, how's everybody doing?
Doing good.
Doing good.
Yeah?
I was just thinking the fig tree, it wasn't in that fig tree's time to produce. And so he didn't produce and it was withered, but later on. Would the fig tree, it wasn't its time, but could the fig tree? Get to be a time at which it could be done fruitful?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
There's another te, there's another teaching that says, that of, of Jesus that says. The, the, the vineyard owner, right, um, sees a tree and it hasn't produced any fruit. And so he tells, he tells the vineyard, um, manager. Cut it down. And the vineyard manager says, please, say, you know, let me, let me take this. I'm sorry, I got something going on. Turn it off, um, he says, um. Let me take this tree, right? Let me, let me work with it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put fertilizer around it, I'm gonna prune it and let's see what happens. If it doesn't, if nothing good happens next season. Then, then we'll cut it down. And, and the vineyard owner goes, oh, okay, well, and it does, it produces. So one of the least lessons from that is the fact that nothing is beyond salvation, right? Even those things which had been written off, and the vineyard owner is God, right? Even God, it's enough, done with that. And so then we have, you know, and then we have this person in the form of Christ that comes and says, let me. Give him another chance, let me work with him a little bit. And we're those people, we're those people that, you know, for God. God doesn't need us. He wants us, but he doesn't need us, right? And he could have been done with us, we talk about the original fall, the original sin and those things, but even if we don't go back that far. Things that, the way that we live our lives now and the fact that we, that we're not completely pure and, and that we don't live up to, to those things. You know, God could just say, I'm done with those. But we have Jesus right there saying, hey. Let me work with him. Let me work with him. Give me another season with him.
Right.
And we know the way it turns out.
Hopefully.
Yeah. So the things that go on, then, we continue on is the preparation. For the Passover, which would have been Thursday night. And we're gonna actually go through that, the only thing I wanna talk, tell you about Passover. Um, has anybody ever produ, have ever participated in a Passover seder?
Youth group.
Like it? Did you like it?
Not that much.
No?
I liked it because Bob Morton did it, but other than that.
Yeah.
Different, but Bob and Janet Morton did it for the group, for the tellers, at least maybe two years, I'm thinking we did that.
Right. So you had horseradish and you had the, the bitter herbs and you had.
That fish too, that I, what's that fish? Or something.
Yeah.
That's what I remember.
And then, and then the hard boiled egg, right?
That was okay.
All of those things, uh, and you can actually go, if you go to, if you go to a, a Jewish house, many of them have Passover plates, they actually have. Plates that are compartmentalized that all that stuff goes into. But it's been done the same thing, and again, you gotta remember, the, the Passover. Is the remembrance of when they were freed from their slavery in Egypt. And the Passover was after all those plagues were laid on Egypt and, you know, and. And Pharaoh had a set, you know, a couple of times says, yeah, go, you know, and then he hardened, his heart was hardened. So finally, what happened is the angel of death flies over and they said, look. Uh, if, if you're Jewish, take lamb's blood and mark the top of your door sill, right? And the angel is gonna fly over your house. And um, so it killed all of the firstborn ma, males. In Egypt, and um, so that was, that was the Passover, that's why the angel passed over their houses. And then, and, and then after that, Pharaoh said, just get out of here, right? We don't want anything to do with you folks anymore. And then his hearts hardened and they chase him, so. What it is, is that there's um, there's unleavened bread because they had to move so fast that they didn't have time to have the dough to rise, so that's why they used the unleavened bread. And each one of those things, that the, there's uh, the bitter herbs. Right, are supposed to be this, you know, the, the taste that was in their mouth from their slavery, so it all, it all plays a role into it. And the whole past, if you go through the whole Passover dinner in an actual Jewish household. They have about five or six spots where you drink glasses of wine. And uh, then on top of that, uh, and, and you're there for probably a good two or two. Two to two and a half hours. In the, through the whole thing. I love, right, there's two parts of it that as a Christian, um. I, I know, because I get lost, I got lost in the middle of it, but in the beginning. They asked the youngest child, right, who, uh, but, but who's old enough to speak, right? They asked the youngest child to start it off. And they always started off with the same way, which is, why is this night any different than the other nights? And that begins the whole, you know, story, but this is how they're passing down their heritage. And then at the end, at the very, very end of the Passover dinner. Um, the eldest male who has presided over it, you know, was taught. Looks at everybody and they have one last toast and they say, next year in Jerusalem. Meaning that, you know, we're gonna, they're gonna do everything they could to try to celebrate next year in Jerusalem, so. Um, so it's a beautiful thing and you gotta remember that this Passover supper, when we do the Last Supper. That's, that's what Jesus was doing with his disciples. They made preparations for it and they had the upper room. And that it was a highly religious ceremony that they were going through. And the words were well known to all the disciples because it, it was done every single year, and the same words and the same prayers and the same toasts. Were always made. But then. In the midst of it. Jesus changes. Can you imagine what their response was? Wow. Just when we thought we knew this, Jesus, he does, he, he turns, turns, turns up a new, a new, a new spade of dirt turned over here, and now we gotta figure this out too. So it was a mystery then, and it's a mystery now because we still don't understand. Everything that goes on when we gather around the communion table. And denominations have fought for generations about what it means. You know, in between, within the domination, but also between denominations too, you know, and so. As, as reformed people, um. We're, we're right in the middle of it. We say that it is, it's a, it is a, it's a warrant from Jesus, we're told to do this in remembrance of him. But we also hold that it's much more than just a physical remembrance. We think that there's, there's, that um, that it is certainly a sacrament where God is present. And that we are participating with God when we do it. So we are solidly in the middle and that also means that in order to be in the middle, we need to embrace the fact that. There's a big mystery that's involved with it, there's things that benefit to us. Um, that, that are newer to our benefits that we, that we're just not aware of. And uh, so we do it, so we're gonna be doing that again tomorrow night. So prepare your cup and your plate and bring it, and we'll do that, we'll do that tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, any questions? Was this helpful for our holy week?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely, loved it.
Good, good. All right. Um, so. Why don't we get moving and so we'll continue on with our, our preparations and our nights and everything like that, but we're gonna pray together before we go. Lord, we desperately try to uh, create space for you in our lives. And we have to be really careful because we'll uh. We'll fill ourselves up with the, the things that aren't very important and not leave enough room for that. For you. But we know that when we do create that space, that you will fill it and then you take, uh, you take just the ordinary things that we go through and. And you show us how holy they can be. So Lord, uh, we see that there's an awful lot of suffering around us. And when we pray, we allow the Holy Spirit into our lives and so that we can see that there can be holy moments even in the midst. Of all this suffering. That uh. That even just the kindest words or the smile or reaching out a hand and helping somebody. It might be a minor thing on our part, but it could be just a major element of uh, of. Of the resurrection of a life for people who are in need. So Lord, we thank you for the opportunities you give us, and we do all of this because of what you did for us in Jesus Christ, who came not only to teach us. But also to die for our sins, the things that separate you, us from you. And that also in that faith and that belief that we will participate in the great resurrection to come. So Lord, thank you for these saints that have gathered around uh, your words today. And we ask that you continue to be with us as we walk through this holy week. That we use it as an opportunity to be closer to you. And we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We pray to you from the top of our souls. And Lord, in the midst of our faith, we pray in the way that you taught us to pray, saying, our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. But it will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our debts as we forgive our debtors. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is and the power and the glory forever. Amen. Amen all.
Amen.
I bless you all.
Yeah. Thank you.
We'll see you tomorrow, it's supposed to be cold, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to do it, I'm gonna try to do it around our fireplace, so we'll do it.
Uh, Tim, I have a question. Um, for those of us that are reading tomorrow, um, will we get a just some, so I know I've got the, uh, the bulletin. Will we get some sort of a cue when it's our turn, I mean, to make sure we're not muted or whatever and, yeah.
We've got, we've, one of the reasons, one of the wa, one of the reasons that Barry and Margot were working, uh, this is because they're going to be helping us do that tomorrow, but I will, don't worry about it, I don't want anybody to, don't, don't get worked up about it because I'm going to say.
No big deal, okay.
I'd say, and Kip, will you read our next?
We'll send you a message telling or asking you to unmute yourself.
Okay.
Before you start.
All right, I, I'm going tonight from a laptop, my wife's laptop, which is the first time I've done this and it's, I, I, it's actually worked out very well, so, uh, I'm not too concerned about it, so.
You can, uh, you, you can unmute, you always remember that you can unmute by pushing your spacebar too.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yep, all right, good, thank you.
All right. Look forward to it, it'll be fun.
Yep.
All right.
All right, seven o'clock tomorrow on Zoom, everyone.
Same password and everything, Carrie?
No, it's, it's an, it's a different one that was in the E light, I'll send out something tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
See, I didn't send it to you yet, so it'll be there.
Okay.
You get it. Okay, thank you so much for that reminder though, I appreciate it.
Hi.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, Mrs. Galabes, wherever you are.
Wherever you are.
Wherever you are.
How funny. Bye, everyone, love you guys.